This is just what, this is, this is the change.
That's the change we're adjusting.
All right, good, here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city council meeting for the City of Edina. It is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, 7:01 PM. And we're going to call the meeting to order in just a moment, but first of all, I want to remind people, as Director Bennerott just did, that we are handling these meetings, as we have in the past, in a hybrid sort of way, as the word is used, combination of live and remote meetings with people tuning in from the virtual world, they might be on cable TV, they may, might be on edinamn.gov live meetings, or on Facebook. And you'll be a chance to participate tonight in community comment. As Director Bennerott mentioned, if you want to talk to the council about a matter of concern that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, call this number on the screen, 786-496-5601. Enter the conference PIN number, 843-6056, 843-6056. Press the pound sign, you'll speak to an operator, and the operator will get you to Director Bennerott, and then you can get in to talk to the council. So having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our Clerk Sharon Ellison to call the roll. Clerk Ellison.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember-elect Agnew.
Here.
Councilmember-elect Rissler.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. The first thing we're going to do this evening now is to administer the oath of office, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so we're going to have our Clerk Sharon Ellison administer City Council and HRA oaths to both our new council members, Kate Agnew and Julie Rissler. And you will take them one at a time.
Okay. Councilmember-elect Agnew, raise your right hand, or repeat after me.
I, Kate Agnew.
I, Kate Agnew.
Do solemnly swear under oath.
Do solemnly swear under oath.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
In the city of Edina.
In the city of Edina.
Of the county of Hennepin.
And the county of Hennepin.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, before Councilmember Agnew leaves, do you want to take some photos with family?
Well, actually, let's do the HRA right away.
All right, oh, do the HRA, all right. Oh, yeah, you wouldn't want a photo taken before she got sworn into the HRA.
Right.
All right, so just, in different languages. Please raise your right hand, or repeat after me.
I, Kate Agnew. I, Kate Agnew. Do solemnly swear under oath. Do solemnly swear under oath.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of commissioner.
Of the office of commissioner.
Of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Of Edina, Minnesota.
Of Edina, Minnesota.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am.
That I am.
And was at the time of my appointment.
And was at the time of my appointment.
A resident of the city of Edina, Minnesota.
A resident of the city of Edina, Minnesota.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
You'll come to the table here. I use sign your signature. Now you can do your photos. Come right into the metal, they all will free him.
I was hoping she'd turn around, but it's not happening.
Please raise your right hand, or repeat after me.
I, Julie Rissler.
I, Julie Rissler.
Do solemnly swear under oath.
Do solemnly swear under oath.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
In the city of Edina.
In the city of Edina.
Of the county of Hennepin.
Of the county of Hennepin.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do the one for the HRA. Raise your right hand, please. I, Julie Rissler.
I, Julie Rissler.
Do solemnly swear under oath.
Do solemnly swear under oath.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of commissioner.
Of the office of commissioner.
Of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Of Edina, Minnesota.
Of Edina, Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am.
That I am.
And was at the time of my appointment.
And was at the time of my appointment.
A resident of the city of Edina, Minnesota.
A resident of the city of Edina, Minnesota.
Awesome, congratulations again.
Thank you.
You all can come up. Can we have a sign first? Yes, I need a sign. You want to have your sign. Can I draw your newspaper? Great, and let's have you come up just a little bit. Yeah. Help him. Safety shots. All right, thank you. Thank you.
I asked them to join us up here in the dais. You could probably just stay standing, because the next thing is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda that's been published to the folks in Edina and to the council. Is there anyone on the council or at the staff level who wishes to modify the meeting agenda in any form or fashion? All right, hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. And now we are back at community comment. Let's put that number up on the screen again, so if anybody wants to call in. And a reminder, you're free to call in about any concern that you might have, something you want to visit with the council about, but it cannot be on the agenda this evening or be a matter scheduled for a future public hearing. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on any matter of concern to them? Okay, seeing no one coming forward, is there anyone on the line that wishes to address the council?
Yes, I have a caller.
You are just a big grinning, ear-to-ear grin.
I'm so excited to start the year this way. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive, Edina. As you're well aware, the City of Edina relies heavily on mutual aid for fire department support for fires. I've asked this question a number of times over the years, but, and I've also talked last year to the Assistant Chief of Minneapolis Fire Department about why Minneapolis is never called on mutual aid fires in Edina, especially in northeast Edina, where the coverage is exceptionally poor. A Edina resident last year did a spreadsheet showing the call times going to northeast Minneapolis and northeast Edina. And because of that, there was a push to add another fire station in Edina. Unfortunately, this fire station is going to be put in the southernmost part of Edina, where there's already a cluster of fire stations. It's going to be built, or proposed to be built, a mile and a half from Bloomington Fire Station Number Four, and two and a half miles from Richfield Number Two, and yet it's still going to be three or four miles from 50th and France. I hope you realize where you're sitting right now at Edina City Hall, the closest fire station is the Minneapolis Fire Department Station Number 28 up on 50th and Uptown. If there's a fire at 44th and France, the two closest fire stations are Minneapolis 22 and 28, and the third closest is St. Louis Park. So as you can see, highlighted, Edina really needs to use Minneapolis for mutual aid calls. And like I mentioned, I talked to the Assistant Superintendent, and she has no idea why the suburbs in general, and Edina in particular, do not call for mutual aid from Minneapolis. There was a condominium fire over off of 66 in France a few months ago. Minneapolis has never called, even though Station Number 28 was the third closest fire station. And if somebody in Minneapolis is going to ask, how do I know that? I went to Station Number 28, they have a system that pulls up their calls, their truck was in the station all night that night. So I've had proof, I have data and evidence. That's what the National League of Cities says to use in decision-making, data and evidence. The city, when they built this fire station, the proposed new fire station should have pulled up all the data I'm referring to, the distance, different parts of the city, from the various fire stations in Minneapolis and surrounding suburbs. The last thing I'd like to mention, the City of Edina has a national fire rating of ISO three. The national fire rating on a one-to-five basis, the one is the best. St. Louis Park and Bloomington have ISO ratings of two, which is a better fire rating. A lot of that is probably around the fact Edina only has one fire station. You may be aware that there is Edina Fire Station Number Two. This is not an active fire station, it stores a fire truck, there is not an active crew there. Northeast, this new fire station, proposed new fire station is not going to do a whole lot of good for northeast Minneapolis, for northeast Edina. But I'm proposing, and I'd like to know why, and get a good answer, why Edina does not call the City of Minneapolis Fire Department for mutual aid when it makes sense.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frankel.
Why do you call Minneapolis? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. All right, anybody else on the line?
I have no other callers tonight, sir.
Okay, thank Mr. Frankel for calling in. Our practice is that we have our city manager review any comments that our residents made at the prior meeting, and then answers those questions. So does our city manager have any response to the community comments that might have been made at our last meeting?
We did not have any community comment at our previous meeting, and regards to this community comment, we will have subject matter experts here at our next meeting to respond. We've responded to it before, and we'll respond to it again.
Right, that's a good observation. I feel like we've probably responded to this mutual aid question regarding Minneapolis before, but we'll be happy to do it again. And we'll have subject matter experts here in two weeks. All right, that completes the community comment portion of the agenda, and next we have the consent agenda. I think Member Rissler wanted to remove from Roman VI, this consent agenda, items B and L. Is that correct, Member Rissler?
It was A and B. I had a question about L, but that was addressed.
Okay, so A and B.
Right.
Okay. With the exception of items A and B on the consent agenda, well, first of all, let me ask, does any other council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing, with the exception of items A and B, which we'll deal with separately, is there a motion to approve the balance of the items on the consent agenda, again excluding items A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to approve the consent agenda items with the exception of items 6A and 6B. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion and stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. And then let's go to the minutes of the meeting, that was December 20th. Member Rissler, go ahead.
I wasn't there, so I don't feel comfortable voting, or approving.
I'm sorry.
For the minutes, I was not present, so I don't want to approve, or...
Oh, all right, okay, thank you for the clarification. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 2020, 22?
So moved.
Second. All right, we've got a motion, second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 20, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried.
Do you want to add, screw abstention?
Abstention.
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 Thank you. Two abstentions for the new council members that were not at that meeting, obviously not sworn in yet. And then on to the approval of the payment of claims, and Member Rissler.
I have not been trained in on that, so I would also like to abstain.
Just a minute here. Wrong place. All right, is there a motion to approve item 6B, which is the approval of the payment of claims?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the payment of claims. That's in our packet, this particular meeting, for this particular meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the payment of claims for this reporting period, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Abstentions?
Do I just say aye? I abstain?
I abstain.
All right.
Yep. All right, we've got two abstentions from the approval of the payment of claims, and the motion carries. The payment of claims registry is approved. And then we're on to reports and recommendations, portion of the agenda. And the first matter there is a resolution accepting donations to the City of Edina for our new members, under state law, to accept donations to the city, you need a supermajority of the council members approving those donations to be accepted. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-08?
So moved.
Second.
Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-08, which would accept donations to the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-08, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And this reporting period, we have donations to the Edina Police Department, and two of them are from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, $7,434.99, just about, well, it's for the Mavic 3 drone purchase, again, from the Crime Prevention Fund, a little over $3,600 for community engagement promotional items. And then an annual gift that we get from the NC Little Memorial Hospice to the Police Department for general use. This year, it's in the amount of $1,750. Those donor organization names will be published on the city website, and we thank all those organizations for their support of the city, and specifically its police department. Now we're on to item 7B, which is the appointment of the acting mayor. And we've had some conversation about this internally, and I think amongst some of our council members. For our new members, what we've done historically is the appointment of the acting mayor, the mayor pro tem that serves in the absence of your mayor, has been the person with the longest seniority, just by practice. But we have two members that have the exact same seniority, and they've had a conversation between them. One of them is going to serve as acting mayor, and one is going to serve as vice chair of the HRA, assuming that all goes well on Thursday. And so with respect to the acting mayor position, as I understand it, there would be a motion to appoint Councilmember James Pierce to be the acting mayor for calendar year 2023. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved. A second.
All right, we've got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to appoint Councilmember James Pierce to be the acting mayor for calendar year 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion and stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. And next is the appointment of members to the School-City Partnership Committee, and I'm going to have Manager Neil introduce this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of years ago, there was some agreement between the school, the school board and the city council, that there was a need for more policy discussion, and just more communication relationship building between the two organizations. So we formed the School-City Partnership Committee. It has representatives, both from staff standpoint, the superintendent and I both attend these committee meetings. The school district has three members, the city has two members. Just because they can have three, they have a larger board without having open meetings issued. So we appoint members to this annually, and the choice is the discretion of the council, who is appointed to this assignment. The meetings generally are two to three times a year, depends on need, and we discuss issues that are of mutual concern to both organizations.
And you had a suggestion with respect to filling one of those positions, and that was because of who was sitting on it from the school district side?
The schools, historically, the mayor and school board chair have not served on this committee, but the school has appointed the school board chair to be part of their delegation. So I think there is some, there does seem to be some balance if we could appoint our mayor to one of those two positions. It is the discretion of the council to do that, but I think if they have their chief elected official, there's some advantage to having our chief elected official as well.
And I'm willing to do that, if that's the desire of our council. But we'll still need potentially one, or we will need one, and potentially two, depending upon the level of interest in serving on this joint committee. Member Jackson, you've done it, you did it last year.
I did do it before, and really enjoyed it. I would love to do it again. I don't think we can have three, because it is a quorum, so...
No, right.
Yeah, but yeah, if my fellow members are willing, I would like to serve on that.
Other thoughts from council members? Member Rissler?
I would approve of, or approve of that, I think that sounds good. Does Member Agnew have any? Okay.
You're comfortable with that, Councilmember Agnew?
Yes, I would be.
Okay. Councilmember Pierce?
So just, the question I have, the last time we did this, so, two years ago, maybe, I don't even feel like I understood what we were doing until we were almost done. And so I just, I think it would be good if, from a practice standpoint, if we're not out of order, to have you, Manager Neil, kind of go through all of these, so we kind of get a little deeper understanding of what they are than what's...
All the items, these agenda items?
Not all the agenda items, the appointments. So the Southwest Cable Commission Board, the I-94 Corridor Commission, the Airport Highway 169, those.
I think that's where the agenda is crafted. You would have a comment as a...
But before we decide who's going to do what.
Who's on what?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's a good thought.
Happy to do that. The Southwest Cable Commission is a commission that is comprised of representatives, both an elected representative and an appointed representative from the five cities that form the consortium. Those cities are Richfield, Edina, Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. So two members from each city, one elected, and the other staff, generally the city manager. That group meets twice a year, and they address issues of, look, cable television franchises. Not a lot of action in that area, to be honest with you. The South, excuse me, the board for the I-494 Corridor Commission, this is a group that is comprised of the cities...
Could you hold that for a second?
Sure.
But just talk a little bit more about what the work of the Cable Commission is.
The Cable Commission manages the franchise agreement, franchise fees, they discuss new franchisees who are entering the market for cable television. We have very able legal counsel in Brian Grogan that has managed this group since its inception, but that is about the extent of what this group does.
So they would negotiate, would they negotiate contracts with Xfinity, for example, or...
With the cable provider. Comcast, in that case.
All right, and then how frequently, you should maybe comment on how frequently they meet, and when they meet.
Twice a year, generally in April and October.
So, if I may, so I'm currently serving on there, and my favorite part of it is learning about the studio down in Bloomington, and we have quite a bit of discussion about the programming that's done there, and, and the use of that space, so that's actually part of it as well.
The Cable Commission does not regulate how much you pay for cable. They don't regulate what's on TV. We do, however, get into occasionally other issues related to cable television, such as when they dig up your yard. That's, that's a problem that we can become involved in. How they handle their customer service is another problem that we can become involved in.
Okay, and then the 494 Corridor Commission?
494 Corridor Commission has everything to do with 494, particularly the piece of it that kind of runs adjacent to Edina's southern border. That, that group consists of, I'm looking at Mr. Milner now, I'm sure, Richfield, Bloomington, Eden Prairie.
That's right, Richfield, Edina, Bloomington, Eden Prairie.
Yeah.
Minnetonka, but not Maple Grove.
Plymouth.
No, Plymouth dropped out, and Maple Grove dropped out.
Yeah, they have, they've been in before, but they've dropped out as they've looked at other kind of transportation issues across the north metro.
So they'll deal with advice on all issues related to transportation on 494, including that new interchange at 35W and 494?
And it, that project is, still has work to do on it, in terms of, maybe not in terms of design, but even some design issues, but certainly cost issues, staging issues, contractor selection, all those sorts of things, so...
You've been doing that, James.
Yeah, that one is a little bit more involved than the others. But I do think it's been good information, but we'll go through a period of time where we figure out what our priorities are, and legislators come, and we have the same conversation with them regarding the plans for the corridor. We look at capital improvement plans, all of that, and so it is a lot more involved, but it's really interesting. I would say the challenging part about it, for me, was always when they met. When we were hybrid in COVID, it worked great. You'd get up at 7:30 in the morning, and you've got to, you know, you go to the meeting. It was a lot easier than if you were... It was a lot easier than if you were working a full job now, and then you have to be present for it.
And it's monthly?
Yeah. So they've changed that schedule, but it was monthly earlier. Yeah.
So there are two positions, or there's, the position on this is for the commission, I-40, 494 Commission itself, and then the, then the project team, what is that called? Policy Advisory Commission, or the Policy Advisory Committee, which is a subgroup, I believe.
And that's for the specific project between Eden Prairie and the airport.
Yeah.
So there's two, there's the broader commission, and then this is a project advisory, like, when should we go out and have comments? When should we come to Edina? They want that kind of feedback.
Right. So we have two positions on that, and we think one of those positions really ought to be the person who is also serving on the Corridor Commission itself.
What about on the Project Advisory Committee? Can that be a technical person or a staff person? Or is that?
Well, there's a lot of staff involvement, but I think they're looking for two electives in this case, aren't they, Mr. Milner?
Yep. And we already have staff.
There's some policy decisions to be made, I think, on that project.
A lot.
Yep. Did you do both, Councilmember Pierce?
I did. And I, I am happy to continue to do that, but I've been really transparent schedule-wise. Sometimes I can make it, sometimes I can't. And when Andrew was able to be there, then we kind of can trade off a little bit. But they are really clear about, we need to have somebody from Edina at a particular meeting, because they like to set a direction or make a decision, so. Yeah.
And then what about the, I don't see it on here, but maybe the timing isn't right, but the NOC, Noise Oversight Committee for the MAC?
That, that's on a different cycle, appointment cycle.
Different cycle?
Yep.
Okay. Did any of those descriptions cause either of our new members to get so excited they could hardly stand it and wanted to serve in one capacity or another?
If I may, Mayor? I think that it was two positions that stood out to me. One was the, the school board partnership. I think that that one's particularly interesting, as well as the Southwest Cable Commission sounded really intriguing.
Member Rissler?
Conveniently, the 494 Corridor Commission did sound interesting to me. So this works out very nicely.
Member Pierce, you got a decision to make. Do you think it's important to have the same person serving in both capacities, Member?
I think so.
We think so?
We think that there's, one of those two positions on the Policy Advisory Committee should be the person that serves on, as our rep on the Corridor Commission.
And, and city staff?
Yep.
Yeah. So I, you know, I would do that one again if Member Rissler and I are partners on it.
That sounds good.
Could be an alternate member?
Well, if I may, I think, I think that they're calling for one on the overall commission and two on the regional, on the project commission, is what, the way I'm reading this.
That's, that's right. And we, it's a, it's a JPA, so we don't really have a lot of flexibility in terms of how many people we appoint. We have to, so one for the, one for the commission as a whole, and two on the Corridor Policy Advisory Committee.
Which is in conjunction with the project that's supposed to start this year?
Right.
I think, or next year. Okay. So Member Rissler, you'd be comfortable with that, serving on that Policy Advisory Committee?
I would.
Okay. And Member Agnew, the Southwest Cable Commission, sounds appealing. We'd love to have you serve there. If I don't, I didn't, Member Jackson, you're content being on the school?
I am. I am.
So we're trying to?
I think Member Agnew will like the Cable Commission.
Okay. All right. Now, that was a good idea that Member Pierce had there, so we could kind of discuss all of the possibilities at once before we just take them on here now. So with respect, I'm going to ask Member Jackson this, with respect to the School-City Partnership Committee, might there be circumstances where, you know, one of us, the two of us couldn't attend, where we could have, let's see, Member Agnew as an alternate?
Well, the way we've been doing it is, we get an email from Scott and Stacy saying, these are the dates that are available, what works for you. So it's pretty flexible according to our calendars.
Yeah, we'll fit it in.
So we'll find a way to get you there. But, you know, it's always good to have an alternate, but, but I think that we're real flexible in our scheduling.
Okay. All right. I'll take the lead on some of these from, based on the conversation here. And is there, with regard to the appointment of members to the School-City Partnership Committee, is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Jackson and the mayor to the School District Partnership Committee?
So moved.
Member Pierce moves, Member Rissler seconds, the appointment of Councilmember Jackson and the mayor to the School District, School-City Partnership Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, the stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Next, with regard to appointment of the Southwest Cable Commission, is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Agnew to the Southwest Cable Commission Board?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds, the appointment of Councilmember Agnew to the Southwest Cable Commission Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, the stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Appointment to the Board of the I-494 Corridor Commission, is there a motion to appoint Councilmember James Pierce to the I-494 Corridor Commission?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Rissler, to appoint Councilmember James Pierce to the I-494 Corridor Commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, the stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then with respect to the Highway 169, 494 Project Policy Advisory Committee, the PAC, as it's known, is there a motion to appoint Councilmembers Julie Rissler and James Pierce to the I-494 Airport to Highway 169 Project Policy Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Agnew seconds, the motion to appoint Councilmembers Julie Rissler and James Pierce to the I-494 Airport to Highway 169 Project Policy Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, the stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion passes. And that takes us to the end of the appointment process. That coupled with all of the resolutions that we handled in the consent agenda, gets us through all of that beginning of the year work. And we've got commission, some commission correspondents in front of us this evening. We're going to now go to manager comments, and I'm going to turn to executive director, or executive, our city manager, Scott Neal.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. The only comment I have tonight is I wanted to introduce you to Mr. Brooksbank, Jack Brooksbank. Jack is substituting tonight for David Kendall, who is stranded in Costa Rica.
Is that, that was an odd use of the word stranded. Yeah, all right. Mr. Brookbank, thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. I think we need a motion on sketch plan review to continue it to the next meeting, is that, since that was on the agenda?
All right, let's do that. We've got the, yeah, that's been, that's been pulled off this agenda by the applicant. Is there a motion to continue the sketch plan review for 5201 Grandview Lane to the January 17, 2023 City Council Meeting?
So moved. Second.
Member Agnew moves, Member Jackson seconds, the motion to continue the sketch plan review for 5201 Grandview Lane to the January 17, 2023 City Council Meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, the stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. That sketch plan review will now be in front of us in two weeks, on January 17, 2023. We had the manager's comments with regard to Mr. Brookbank. We welcome him here this evening. And then we're going to go back to City Manager Neil's comments.
That's all you had?
That's all you had? All right. And then let's go to, let's go to Member Rissler. Any comments?
None.
None this evening? All right.
None this evening. It's just, it was wonderful to campaign and to talk to so many residents. I am looking forward to working with council members. It's good to be here.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
None for me tonight. Thanks.
Member Pierce?
Just a hearty, warm welcome to our two new council members. Excited to work with both of you. That's it.
Great, great comment. I think we all are keen to have our new council functioning, and it's, it was going to be a wonderful council, I think, working on behalf of the city of Edina residents. So I said that I would. Kate, excuse me.
None for me, thank you.
All right. I'll get back in the groove of this, too. So I, we talked last time about the reporting out on this event that I got invited to down in Chicago, which was on the 8th of December. We've got a, I think, as everybody on the council knows, we've got a significant Chinese-American community here, well over 300 strong, that does some beautiful cultural things. And over time, they've acquainted me with the U.S. Heartland China Association, which was started by Governor Bob Holden, former governor of Missouri. And they've got a staff down in Missouri. And they called me, oh, I think it was around Thanksgiving time, and asked, would I be part of a mayor's roundtable discussion with mayors, other mayors from the Midwest, mayor from Normal, Illinois, Youngstown, Ohio, Wausau, Wisconsin, and then Edina, Minnesota, to be moderated by Rick Snyder, who was a former governor of Michigan at this event. And it was an opportunity to kind of promote our town as a place for economic development by companies that might be China-based or have some connection to China. It was also an opportunity for me, because the other mayors were not from a metropolitan area, to be able to talk about our region as a possibility for business, and also our state. Our state has about, they're about, no, I would say it in reverse, there's about 16 businesses from China that do business in the state of Minnesota, and there's probably 50 or 60 Minnesota-based companies that do business in China. I think that whole range of activity, each direction is about $2 to $4 billion. Down in Illinois, that's a significantly larger presence with respect to the, both the Chinese-American community and Chinese businesses that are based down there. And so that was interesting to learn about, some of the things that they're doing in the Chicago area. The sponsors were not only the U.S. Heartland China Association, but also the, there's a Chinese-American Chamber of Commerce in Chicago, and then their world business, Chicago, is kind of the equivalent of Greater MSP, which is their economic development entity. And then the panel that followed us, followed the mayors, actually, there was one that preceded us on clean energy and climate change. The moderator was a person from Ernst &amp; Young, and there were some real interesting folks as part of that panel. And then the panel that followed us was China Outlook 2023, and as you can well imagine from the geopolitics that we see ongoing day to day, it's a little bit of a challenge. And the moderator for that conversation was a member of that Chamber of Commerce in Chicago, a guy named Pin Ni, who was a really interesting fellow. And then the person that wasn't unable to show up was the, that didn't get there because of challenges in transportation, was the U.S. Ambassador from China to the United States. But he was able to be there for the dinner that evening. But the other persons on that, that panel were a fellow from the University of Chicago, somebody from, who was an executive in residence at the University of San Francisco, who was a past president of the American Chamber of Commerce in Shanghai. And then the third panelist, I want to mention him by name, was a guy named John Holden, who was the former president of the National Committee on U.S.-China Relations. And I, after my panel was finished, he came up to me and said, hey, I just want to introduce myself, I'm John Holden, retired, living in Tucson, but he said I grew up in Hopkins. And he had spent 12 years, early in his career, working for Cargill. And he was a Mandarin Chinese speaker, and then he had been approached by this National Committee on U.S.-China Relations to, to head that up. And my sense was that he headed that up for a couple of decades, and was really an interesting guy, so I asked him to stay in touch with us. If he ever came up to Minnesota, he does come up to Minnesota once in a while, still has a connection to Hopkins. And then the next panel was this ambassadorial dialogue, where the ambassador of the U.S. was missing. I misspoke when I said he was part of the China Outlook 2023. But then the other two panelists that got all the attention then were Terry Branstad, who was a former governor of Iowa, and then Max Bacchus, who was a former U.S. Senator from Montana. Both of them had been U.S. ambassadors to China during the years after they were serving in elective office. Both talked, I'd say effusively, about their relationship with Chinese people. And kind of the upshot of the whole thing was I was left with the sense that, you know, you can affect geopolitics from the grassroots up, as well as having geopolitics affect you from the, from the top down. And so will we be moving to more openness in the years to come with China? Our economies are inextricably intertwined, the two largest economies in the world. We're going to have to figure out, I think, some way to get along. Optimism levels aren't the highest right now, but I think that things will improve. China's still a large growth market for our U.S. companies. The CHIPS Act may have an effect on companies that are doing business in China, continuing to do business in China as we try to consolidate some of those important semiconductor manufacturing operations back here in the United States. But there's still a lot of opportunity around. This professor from the University of Chicago said there's only about 300 U.S. students in China today, which is really about the low point. And part of that COVID-related, of course, and there are usually about 10,000 students here in the United States from China at any one time. So I just found the whole, that whole day, I got down there early in the morning, I got picked up by a person from town here who was down there on business. Part of the Chinese-American population here was instrumental in doing the New Asia Market out in, in Eden Prairie. And just had a terrific day of learning and meeting people, and then the evening banquet was fascinating. I ended up with this long kind of head table that was, I don't know, 50 feet long. And I wasn't that far from the U.S. ambassador to, from China, and got to meet him and his wife, and had some other good conversations across the table with, with different people. And all in all, a very enjoyable experience. The person that got kind of the most attention was a tall Chinese woman. Everybody wanted their photo taken with her. I didn't know who she was, but apparently she had been the captain of the Chinese volleyball, women's volleyball team when they won the gold medal a few years ago. And now she's in, I think, my understanding was she was here coaching the U.S. Women's Volleyball Team.
Wow.
And then there was a woman across from me who was coaching U.S. Olympians, Chinese person coaching U.S. Olympians, I think, in gymnastics. So all in all, well worth it. I think the, the council was good enough to tell me that if we, if we needed to, that this city would cover the expenses for going down there to do this economic development work on behalf of our town and our region and our state. But I think I'm going to get reimbursed by the U.S.-China Heartland Association. So thanks to all of you for approving the, the travel and the expenditure potentially, but I don't think we're going to need to worry about it. So that's, that's kind of a quick rehab of what happened down there in, in Chicago. Member Rissler?
One of the things that I have heard some feedback on is when we travel in the capacity of representatives of Edina to events, we're at conferences and we're learning about things, that's, that's one thing. When we are going and, and speaking on behalf of Edina or representing the city, the region, the state, I think there's a little bit of, well, there is interest in knowing exactly what is being said by officials in that capacity. And I'm just wondering, I know when I've, and it's been a while, when I go to conferences I know when I've, and it's been a while, when I go to conferences and I present, I have a paper that I have worked on over and over again, and I've got all these notes. And I'm wondering if that was the situation, if we could maybe make that available to the community, so we could get a better, more in-depth view of how Edina was represented. Like, just more, because people are interested.
Yeah, I think it was probably recorded. I could check on that, and maybe we could have that sent up here?
That would be wonderful.
So, you know, some of the questions that they raised were how your city's coming out of COVID, are you looking for attractions from other, for companies coming into the state or into your city? What are your, you know, some of your more significant opportunities? What are the attractions in Minnesota for companies from China? And so there was a lot to talk about there, especially, I think, well, so many things to talk about in terms of human wellness and human well-being. Skilled labor force, you know, highest level of education, I think, you know, some of the highest-performing students in the country. All of those things, I think, that would be really intriguing to some of the Chinese companies. But I can see if we can get that panel.
Thank you. I am interested. I'd love to hear it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, that's it for me, for the report out, and I don't have anything else to add. It's been over the holidays. I think all of us have been involved in personal things, and we gave our colleagues, Ron Anderson and Kevin Stottin, a good send-off, and wish them the best, of course. And we've got some spring activity coming up. I don't know if, you were going to check on, you want to talk at all about the National League of Cities at all, or is it a little bit premature yet?
It's not premature. City management fellow Jillian Straub has been interacting with members, and I think sharing that information about dates, times, locations, et cetera. So that's coming together.
I was thinking that the sooner you give our new colleagues in particular that information as to when it occurs and the opportunity to go.
They have committed, I believe.
Yeah, I think Member Jackson and Member Pierce could certainly well speak to their first attendance last year at the NLC meeting in Washington.
Well, thank you. We had, I had a wonderful time, and it wasn't just the information that was relayed. It was meeting people all across, from all across the country, from all different sizes of cities, and then just talking about the issues around COVID, the issues around climate, and then hearing what they're experiencing. And then we had, the last day, I believe, they separated us out by city size and had a table discussion. And that was fascinating. So we covered six areas, one of which was economic development, one was about climate, one was about health and wellness. And I learned so much from my peers, and it was just the kind of thing where you go home and there's so much information to process. But it was definitely worthwhile being there in person and making those connections. It was, I really enjoyed that. And it gave me a chance to be with people from Minnesota as well, sharing a national perspective, how we as a state sort of interact with other, how we compare and contrast with other communities. So I highly recommend it.
Yeah, I would highly recommend it as well. I'd just add maybe two things, because everything that Member Jackson mentioned resonates with me. So the two things I'll add, one, you don't really get a sense of how important local government is on a bigger scale until you go to something like this, and you realize all the things that we're trying to solve, every other city is trying to solve the same thing. And so you kind of get this sense of how big and complex some of our challenges are, and then you get this sense, all right, you're not alone. And you really can impact change at the local level. And so that would be one thing I would add. And then the second, I think, is very similar to Member Jackson's point. I thought it was really cool when we would meet with other cities, and I think we were talking about the same, we were doing, talking about how we're going to spend the CARES Act funding. And they put us in groups with other cities, and I think we did it by size. I think they did it by size. And so if you were within a certain range, you would meet with other cities that were around the same size. And then we would just collaborate on what challenges our cities are having, and how we might leverage some of the funding. And so you just got a lot of ideas. And so I think that was, for me, was one of the highlights. So definitely highly recommend it.
I think you raised one really interesting point, and that is, and we've seen it during COVID, and some of the slowdown in the economy that we saw post-COVID, when there started being significant challenges, it was cities that really stepped up and went to the federal government and said, both at the National League of Cities level and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and said, we really need some significant help here. And so the funds that came to the CARES Act, which for Edina ended up being about 4.9 million, and the ARPA money that came after that, at about 4.6 million, the money that's coming to cities across the country through the Infrastructure Act and the Inflation Reduction Act, all these opportunities are coming our way because of the role that cities play in influencing not only the executive branch, but the legislative branch on a federal level. So I think really important that we, that our voice be heard as part of this process. And I think all of you, all of us benefit from those sort of national participations. All right. Anything else, manager Neal?
None.
Okay. Anything from any of our council members that caused anybody to want to comment further? Member Agnew, you didn't think of anything. I cut you off and didn't mean to. Okay, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Rissler, second by a Member Agnew, to adjourn the meeting of the City Council of the City of Edina on this third day of January 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We stand adjourned.